Big round here. Okay, thank you for joining the Bourbon County Commission meeting this morning, September 6th. Anne, it's always good to see you, Ms. Anne. Okay.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from last commission meeting?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Eric Bailey, please.
All right. Asphalting, we got the one lane done from Grand to Hackberry, or no, Grand to Indian on 215th. We are gonna go ahead and take this week and do some preventative maintenance, make some more chips, and have several employees off with a short week and what have you, so need to get caught up on some things as well. So, we're gonna take this week off from asphalting, we'll get started back next week and get that project taken care of. Also, with that said, we're gonna run two shifts this week out at the Rock Quarry, out at Blake Quarry, so we can produce a few more chips, get a stockpile going.
Good.
And we'll go from there, so. But you know what's, in case anyone asks, we will be going late at night with that. So, also covering CND at the landfill, it's that time. KDHE requires us to do that, and it is time to do it again, so we'll get that done, probably finish it up either today or tomorrow, and have that taken care of. The 18 Prairie Pathway Bicycle Signs, or Bike Signs, will be going up this week as well. I think they have a grand opening or something coming up here pretty quick, so we wanna make sure we have our signs up and in place for that. And then, last but not least here, the low water crossing on Hackberry, we will be working on that, we're starting it today.
Perfect.
I think it's west of 95th, down in, bottoms down there, so.
What do you think it'll take, what kind of process?
Uh, we're gonna fill it in, uh, they're out looking at it right now to see how we wanna go about filling it in, whether we want to, flowable fill, or whether we're gonna put gravel in and then concrete over, or how exactly, but we're gonna have to fill that whole void in on the south side there, and try and do it as cheap as possible, but as, we don't wanna-
Inexpensive.
Inexpensive as possible, there you go, but still end up with a good product at the end, so. A lot of water comes down through there.
Yeah.
So, anyhow, that is about all I have, anything for me?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
What, did you ever get anything back from the state on the bridge?
Have not heard anything yet, on 518. With that said, I do know that the bridges that we talked about for the grants and what have you, did get a receipt that the grants have been, they did receive our grant applications, so, applications have been turned in for those, the two.
And, 'cause I brought this up before, but once you get 518 all secure and everything, let's go for repairs on the metal bridge down south.
Right, and I think I need to say program and not grants, it's the-
But we need to get that one wrapped up first.
Right, absolutely, see where we land out on that, so, anyhow. Anything else?
Sounds great, thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Yep.
Mr. Justin Meeks, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioner. Just, uh, we need an executive session, I do wanna update everyone on the tax sale, we're progressing nicely, a bunch of the orders for the sale actually have been completed and signed off by the judge, we're still on track for October 13th. We have 47 properties within the city limits of Fort Scott with specials on them, and then we have a couple that are outside of the city limits. Just another quick, interesting tidbit of information, the next tax sale that'll hopefully be within the first couple of months of 2023, the properties are shrinking, which is good, we probably have less than 50 for the entire sale, so that means that collections are up and people are realizing that, you know, they gotta pay their taxes, so, that's really good news. So, the title company is working on those now, we're starting to get those abstracts in, we're probably around 14 or 15 so far, we should have some more hopefully here in the next couple, couple months, so, just progression on that, and then we'll probably have a sale either this year or first part of next year for the Hidden Valley lots, which-
How many there?
Hell, a lot, they're a lost leader, they don't make any money, probably around 79. They're, they're the lots not around the lake per se, they're the ones that are around, you know, the-
I know.
Cabana, or whatever you wanna call it, the lots that sell for, you know, 50 bucks, five bucks, and they pay three, three to four dollars a year in taxes.
That's $250.
Yeah, takes us 30 to 40 years to pay off the, to make our money back from the-
So, how many you say there were, Justin?
Probably 79.
Wow. Yeah, so there's, you know, $15,000 minimum expense to us.
Is there anything different that we can-
Well, I heard that.
Yeah, I talked to, I talked to Patty, Patty and I actually-
There was a big discussion last week.
Yeah, I talked to Patty, I think Patty and I actually will probably go, really good chance we'll get on some legislative, do some legislative, you know, data mining, whatever, and go talk to legislators about possibly having a minimum, so, you know, if you're $50 or $100 in our case, well, if it took $100 to get that on the tax sale, that would literally take 30 years of back taxes to, I mean, Lynn Valley wouldn't like that, or Hidden Valley wouldn't like that, because they're not gonna move the properties, but for us, it's just a, so-
Sugar Valley?
Well, I'm saying, uh, Hidden Valley, Sugar Valley's in Lynn.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I get the two. But yeah, Hidden Valley is, got a lot of properties that are outside of the lake area that are for sale, they have quite a few that are, I guess would be to the east of the lake.
Nobody wants it.
No.
Doesn't appear to have any.
Well, I mean, if you could take four or five of those lots and consolidate them, you'd have a really nice lot to build on, but the part of their operational procedures and stuff, you can't do that.
Yeah.
No.
Any chance of changing the procedure?
No, we've asked that.
And there's 47 houses in Fort Scott?
Yes, and what's interesting about those is that there's specials on them, you know, mowing fees, demolition fees, so there's about $400,000 worth of specials, and this could be the fastest sale ever, 'cause what I'm gonna do is, we'll sell the ones outside of the city limits, and then we'll go for the city limits ones, and we'll ask if any of those want to be pulled, because they're substantial. Most of them are demo fees, tearing down the structure that was on the property and then attaching that, basically like a lien on the property. And I know that the land bank is moving along very nicely, there's, they've got a game plan, they understand what they're gonna do, and so it's gonna work really well. I'm excited, to be honest, I mean, I think it's gonna be a good thing after all these years.
Yeah.
So, it's gonna work.
You think most of them are gonna be torn down, or what?
No, well, the ones that are existing are, could potentially be rehabbed, but there's still a substantial mowing, mowing fees or maintenance fees on the actual property, so those specials add up over a, you know, three or four year period, they add up, at $300 of mowing, I think they're down to 100 now, but they're still substantial. I mean, I think the lowest special on the sale's like 700 bucks. There could be a house on, I don't wanna be misquoted, but there's a couple houses on the west side of town that could sell, but the specials are still really high, so it's a matter of putting the money into the structure to get it back up to be, make it livable if it's, if the cost benefit analysis works.
So, just to fill me in, the specials, is that something that someone who has to buy it has to pay in addition?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, is it possible to forgive it?
Uh, the city, the city at this point, and past years, the city did forgive the specials, but that's tax money, so, and we lost the, the person that would buy it for a dollar or whatever, there wasn't any control over who got that, it was free market.
Yeah.
And so now what happens is those specials haven't been waived, and so most likely they'll be dumped into the land bank, and then the land bank board will make the decision on who will take over that property, who will maintain it, who will build on it, who will, you know, control it, basically.
Land bank takes application, there's a lot of specific questions that we ask before it transfers, what their future use is, so, it's, land bank's gonna work.
Yep, it works really well in other communities, it's done amazing in Crawford County, Le Bect County, I mean, it works.
I wanna say thank you, Justin, for your help getting us back on track.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's, I believe in it, I think it's gonna be a good, good process, and it's something that'll be, hopefully, the amount of work now is vast, but as time goes on, I think it'll become more manageable. I do need an executive session for five minutes to discuss legal matters, attorney-client privilege, I need myself and the three commissioners.
Make a motion to go on executive session, KSA 7543 19B2, for consultation with attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship. Be three commissioners, Justin Meeks, they'll return here at nine, looks like it'll be nine 16.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Make a motion, resume normal session, no action.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Aye. Susan Benkramp.
So, today, I need to make some decisions on what we're gonna publish in the paper. So, what I took from the conversation last week is that we wanna try and stay revenue neutral, and if we can, how do we get there? And so I gave some options. Option one was the originally proposed, and that would increase property taxes by 311,765, which is about a two mil increase, but that's still, that's levy flat, so that's the same levy that we levied last year, however, your assessed valuation was up, so it generates more property tax value. Option two was what I suggested last week, is where we transfer $150,000 from the sales tax fund to the sheriff's fund for operations. That would drop it down to only levying for $161,765 more. If we were to take it a step further, we have two funds where we were trying to have some cash reserves so that it didn't make operations so hard the next year, and so one of those funds was the appraiser fund, and the other fund was Bridge and Culvert, so you could take $65,000 from there and reduce it, and so that would get you down to nine, levying for $96,765 more. Would you go a step further, the sheriff, his budget increased, everyone else has stayed flat except for district court and the county attorney, if you wanted to keep his flat, that would be $17,000 more, that, so that would save you $17,000 more, and then if you wanted to do all the options and reduce Road and Bridge by $77,000, that would give you down, get you down to revenue neutral. So, but you have to do all those options to get there.
I see.
So, really just kinda leaving it up for discussion for you guys, and where you wanna land, and how you wanna affect things, if you didn't wanna reduce the sheriff's budget, you could transfer more out of sales tax, it's really a philosophical conversation about how you wanna get there.
Yeah.
But these are just options.
Well, I'll start the conversation. I, I'm in favor of option five, staying revenue neutral, and I say that because, including everyone in this room, most people in Bourbon County were struggling because of inflation, fuel costs, grocery costs, school costs, so we have to do our part, try to hold these numbers down to help our people, help everyone in this room, and it's our country, it's disinflation, taxes are out of control, so, and cost of operation, cost of living's out of control, so, I support option number five.
Yeah, I also support option five, and I don't know if it has to, I don't know if there's any other numbers you could run to take less from Road and Bridge, and I don't know who's all stepping up to offer to cut some of their budget, but one way or the other, I wanna stay revenue neutral.
Yeah, I think it's hard to cut in any of the other areas, they're very, they're, most of it, most of the other budgets are salaries, and then very little operational supplies, so like your clerk and your treasurer, registered these, they're very, already really slim.
But you could take that 17 out of the cell, tie it to the sheriff.
Yeah, so you wouldn't have to cut his budget.
You wouldn't have to cut it quite so hard, well, 'cause you'd make up $17 right there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that would drop Road and Bridge to 60 instead of 77.
Yes, we could do that.
You could do that, that would help, buy more culverts, so.
But this is 77,000 less than last year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You would have to cut him $77,000 more.
I don't have my forms, but I, that doesn't seem right, but, okay.
Eric?
That's the only way you can get to revenue neutral.
Any thoughts on this?
He's already tight.
It's very, very tight, I'm not for sure what the proposal is here, and I'd need to see it, is this-
It's, it would cut your operational $77,000, so if sales tax happens to be up-
Or maybe 60.
Or maybe 60.
Yeah.
I like 60 better than 67.
And we understand fuel costs, but we, we're all hoping fuel costs go down.
Absolutely.
We hope road oil costs go down.
Absolutely.
So, and we hope our growth takes in, and we, more sales tax, et cetera, but we hope it's a chain reaction.
Right, and I will say that services may go down a little bit as well, we may have to cut back, not grade the roads as much, and/or, whatever it might be.
Yeah.
We're just gonna have to look at it, and we'll make the best of-
And you and I have talked about some operational changes you're thinking about making, I don't wanna bring them up here, that-
Right.
I'll wait till you do that.
Right.
That's gonna save a little bit right there.
Right, absolutely.
I mean, it could save that much in fuel, almost.
Right.
In some areas, but others, you'll gain it back, but, but, anyway.
Do I like it? No, but we will make the best of it.
I appreciate it.
What if you jumped, we said 380,000, like they did, maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
Just.
Yeah, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks.
Any comments, Clinton?
Um, I mean, I guess I don't understand the process, because don't we have a budget hearing coming up, and we're talking about this already?
Because I have to publish it in the paper, so whatever, if you want me to publish at that originally proposed, I can do that.
Publish it.
It has to be published in the paper.
You have to publish a certificate page of what you're proposing.
So you have to have a pretty good idea of what you're already gonna do.
Why have a hearing?
Yeah, what, I mean-
Well, the hearing is, the hearing is-
Actually, where's your microphone? I can't hear you. You should have one.
So, anyway, so just another wonderful, another wonderful state-
Yeah.
Thing.
It really wants to be decided today, it's, the public hearing is just a show.
It really needs to be, you guys pretty, have a pretty good idea of what you wanna do, so that I can, when I publish it, you're saying this is really what we need.
And once you publish it, there's no changes.
No, you can change it.
Still change it.
Mm-hmm, you can change it, but the 20th would be my last day that I can-
Then publish all five.
I can't, oh, gosh, oh, no, you don't wanna pay for that.
What a joke.
Maybe about $1,000 to do that.
What an absolute joke. Oh, I'm gonna talk about it in my commission time, too, okay?
Want you to publish, publish option five?
Yep.
Yeah.
Do we need to make a motion on that, or just can we disagree to it, or, any motion?
No, I don't need any, I just need some direction.
I'm in favor of option five.
Option five.
I've got two that are like that, okay?
Thank you.
Perfect, yep.
Anything else?
Yep, that's it.
Morning, Shane?
Well, that may be my head up on my basis card, so.
Okay, we're getting to a five minute break. I'm going to Texas tomorrow, I may never come back, I'll choke it, I might have to with my grandbabies, so. Bird dog, trade you, it's a good hobby, it's expensive, but it's a fun hobby, so. Says you might go, either way, I'm going, out in Panhandle.
Does that make sense?
Maybe these kettles, only days I don't shoot every law, only days they're gonna hook my boot and everything's coming with me, so.
They don't even understand it, frickin' idiots up there.
That's true. They just have bigger shields.
The biggest, the biggest advocate it is, was on the finance thing, was Senator Tyson, that was her baby.
Yep.
And she's bragging up and down on what she did, you guys bored of running.
Well, she didn't win, so.
No, but she's still a senator.
She also tells you that, yeah, she'll also tell you that the schools have more money than they need.
Yeah.
She doesn't know what she's talking about, why she lost.
Okay, Shane, Shane, we're back in session.
The parking lot thing, Frank and I got that stuff done and put it out for bid to advertise, I hadn't talked to him today, but Friday, there hadn't been anybody putting anything in yet, I'd probably expect it'll take a couple of weeks, and then I think we're gonna do the, let's see, the bid opening on the 11th, so, of October, so that should be enough time. They've got all the documentation and stuff there to request it, and we just let them do it, 'cause-
Yeah.
That's their thing, so.
Well, the estimate, I talked to Frank about something else, the estimate that I kinda got, I don't know how we do it, but we might have to look in-house, if the bids come in, what he thinks are gonna come in, and it's-
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, with concrete, it's went down a lot.
Yeah.
I'm more concerned with what's under the ground out there.
Yeah, yeah, but it's something that we could do in-house if we have to, I mean, I know we're busy, but we'll see, so, thank you, though.
That's all I got.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Shane.
Public comment? Yes, sir.
Red light's on, all right. Got the Iowa newspaper, and just to ask this question, they've been asked to sign on a regional action plan that will allow participating counties to qualify for federal funding under President Joe Biden's infrastructure bill, are we part of that? Not, not just them, but they just said, we, we have a regional county, county thing coming up, but this is new, and it, this is done through, the person that asked the county about it was from Thrive, would be the equivalent of our Bourbon County ready, and what I'm asking is, this is an 80/20 match, and what they're doing is, they'll look at the projects around here to see what's dangerous and stuff, and then they will match the 80 and the county 20, and I just thought I'd throw that out there, so.
Thank you.
There you go, this is new money.
We're looking into that, Rob and I are already working on that.
Good, thank you.
There you go.
And I have no problem saying I'm better than that.
Morning, Anne.
Okay, I got a lot, and I don't know where to start, most of the time, and I think- Okay, I got a lot, and I don't know where to start most of the time, and I think the first thing I want is, is an explanation again. And, and I know this is a repeat of why the larger than normal increases in the county attorney and the district's office.
That one's easy.
That one's easy, okay.
Yeah.
I, I know, but I want it said in the public again.
So there was a third judge added to District Court, and the county attorney is already having trouble covering all the courtrooms. So she had to add part-time staff, which is, so a part-time, it'd be another part-time attorney, as well as legal services, like the secretary. And so that's why the increase, and then she also has to change a server this year for capital improvements, the, the county attorney does. But along with that, District Court also increased with an extra person bailiff. The wages were a little bit higher there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You might, you might wanna just sit there, stay.
With the city court of Fort Scott, they are up and active, so they're, they've changed their, they've adopted the new code, and they're processing cases through this, the city, too, now, just FYI. So that happened probably two or three weeks ago.
Oh, it's been going for a little while.
Yeah, a little while, but it's, they're still not, they're still not quite, you know, taking cases away from the district court yet.
Is the city court handling traffic violations?
They're handling everything that's, the, the, some of those cases that are going through that court system used to come to this court system here. And a year from now, we'll, we'll track the data.
So are, we're gonna hear expanded court case, caseload at the municipal court?
Well, we're not, we're not seeing it, we're not seeing it yet.
But we're going to?
We hope.
We don't know that, that's not our deal.
We hope, but that's not.
Well, we had to expand the, the handbook of which arrests or which violations they were gonna hear. That's city.
City, city.
That's what I'm asking, just calm down. That's what I'm talking about. Yeah, but let's make sure people. But make sure you, you listen to me, because I'm, I'm building a story here. So we're, we're operating more at the municipal court?
We hope so.
Okay.
We're not, we're not sure yet.
We, we have a prosecutor, a new prosecutor for the municipal court, or is the one we're paying for here gonna work more than, than one day a month?
I don't know. That's not, that's not, that's the city.
No, it's not, you're, you're placing your prosecutor down there now, one day a month, are you, is it a shared service? Are you being reimbursed for that?
Well, they, they're hired, they're, they're hired separately from the city.
So we have, she's, she's.
She's employed by the city and she's also employed by the county.
So she has a full-time job here and a part-time job there?
Yes. Yeah, she does.
Learned way more than I thought I was gonna learn. Last week, Fire District number three came in for budget approval, and I did not see anything, and I, I know I, I contacted you, Susan, but I'm not quite sure I understood your answer.
Okay.
Fully, on why we don't see Fire District number three in all of the stuff that you gave us.
They, they levy separately, so they're called a special district, and so their information, they would have had to go through the same procedure where they publish it in the paper and everything. The technical part of it, for years ago, they had the county commission take over doing their budget for them, so basically doing all the budget worksheets, and the county approving it for them. I don't know what that history is, Justin would have to talk to that, but the county commission are the ones that actually govern the board, I guess.
But, but we, but, so the.
It's not part of our budget. They're, they have their own budget. It's just like a cemetery or a.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, and so similarly to the sheriff's budget, you all don't have a say.
Right.
In, I mean, we all know, limited maybe, in what they're asking for, I guess, is what, what I wanna, wanna understand.
Yeah.
And then, what about the ambulance? Cause I'm not seeing anything here either about.
EMS?
EMS, or.
It's EMS.
Okay, you called it EMS.
Yeah.
Yes, I do remember seeing that.
Okay.
Um, so, on then to Friday, I did a core request on overtime, and the sheet that I got ended on eight twelve twenty twenty-two was all that was reported to, up to, had been received. And I was, you know, for all the angst that we have when it comes to sheriff and corrections overtime, the one that really left out to me was the ambulance service. Is there a reason for that?
Yes, we have been for a very long time short on paramedics and EMTs, and their overtime is calculated at a different, different rate than the sheriff's department and corrections. And that is, that is federal law, Kansas Department of Labor and Department of Labor laws. You could, they can actually work longer, so they can work forty-eight hours and not be charged overtime in corrections and sheriff, but at forty, anything over forty EMS is charged. And they still work the same type of shifts as, you know, so it's, it's just a difference in how the overtime is charged. And the difference with the ambulance is, we are actually getting revenue coming in through that fund for, from services that we provide. So that's the difference. We've always levied about the same amount of money to fund EMS, and no matter what, by statute, we have to do that. And it's around two hundred and thirty to two hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we subsidize EMS and have for years. Everything else is covered by income.
From subsidizing them?
Get rid of them?
No, no, well.
No, we'll always subsidize.
But at the same time, if, I mean, these numbers are exorbitant every two-week period, in my opinion, when you, when, like I said, when the one, to compare to the sheriff and corrections.
But it's not costing us any more than it did five years ago.
Right.
We're still only subsidizing two hundred and thirty to two hundred and eighty thousand dollars per year. Last year, I think it was two hundred and fifty.
Yeah. It kinda fluctuates.
So every year for the last twenty years.
Well, I guess.
So.
When I, when, when sheriff and corrections come in and we ask them, we hit them repeatedly on what are you doing to advertise, what are you doing to get more people here? And I, I don't hear that same rhetoric to the ambulance folks, and, you know, when, when.
But they're not costing us any more than they did last year.
Well, I, I, in my humble opinion, I don't think they should be costing us anything. How come they're not self, I mean, how much, how much, how much? No.
Do you want an ambulance?
I said that, yeah, okay, that was stupid. I'll admit that, that was dumb, but that's what, two hundred and fifty, that's, if I understand things correctly, that's two and a half mils.
Yes.
Right?
That we've done for years.
That we've done for years.
We have to.
We have to.
You have to do.
We have to keep them sustainable.
Even if they were with, like when Mercy.
We still pay.
Let's circle the wagons here. The thing is, the overtime, you know, again, we harp on sheriff and corrections to hire, 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 but I don't hear that same being voiced here. Hire, and, and in my head, if we're not paying overtime, if we're paying, paying a regular wage, how much more are we saving, just like?
Your cost is gonna go up, because you're gonna have to pay more to get paramedics to come here.
So, when it comes to ambulance, it's cheaper to pay overtime than to hire somebody, whereas with the sheriff and corrections, it appears, from what I have heard, that it's cheaper for them to hire and not pay overtime. I, I don't, to me, I don't see.
Shane, you like the comment?
I'm struggling, I'm struggling, I don't wanna know about their long hours, I don't wanna know.
We hire a deputy as a person off the street and we train them. We hire a paramedic as a highly trained person that we've got to get here. They're already trained when they set foot in our building.
Okay, that's helpful.
So they're really hard to find.
Okay.
Even an EMT has to be trained before we give them a job. A deputy comes in off the street, we hire him, send him to the academy, so it's completely different.
How, how hard is it to hire EMTs, paramedics, nurses right now?
You can't.
Well, still.
Anne, I think I see what you're trying to say. If we hired more people, maybe the overtime would go away, but the people's not available to hire.
We just.
And we're back to that again.
Okay, so Ian, we just had two young kids that were EMTs for a long time, and they went to school, they just came on, so it's not even reflected in these numbers yet.
Correct.
They just came on, and so that should help us start reducing some of that overtime, but the problem is, we're short three, three EMTs. And until we get those filled, you're not gonna see the overtime go down.
Okay.
Cause we still have to fill the slots.
Yes, no, 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 I get that, I get.
You're still gonna see it two hundred to two hundred and eighty thousand dollars even with the overtime gone.
And I think that's the misconception. There's a lot of overtime there, but there are fees for services that are helping cover that, so it's not coming out of the taxpayer's pocket.
Okay, okay. Not sure I understand that yet, okay.
Fees for service, when you hire, when you.
Yes, 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 yes.
When you have an ambulance, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
If you have some, they, they pay us.
Then I pay, yeah, they come to my house.
Yes.
Then I turn around and pay the ambulance.
Yes, and those fees are helping cover the budget of EMS.
Okay, yes, 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 got that one, okay. Uh, let's see. Looking at pages six and A, B, C, and D, those, these, these are kind of, for me, helpful. I guess the first basic question is, last week, a question was brought by a community member about raises. Is anyone getting a raise this year?
No. The, the twenty twenty-three, no.
In twenty twenty-three, no one is getting a raise. Not even a three percent raise.
No.
Then, okay, barring the county attorney and the district court, some of these budgets went up, again, not, not exponentially. And some of them went up, oh, wait a minute, let me look. The courthouse general went up in wages. The IT went up in wages.
IT went up in wages because there's a, there is a, an adjustment for shared services at the city. Hours went up, wages went up, cause that was not budgeted in in twenty twenty-two.
So they still went up, somebody went up.
But we're getting revenue back for it.
Okay.
Who else went up?
Send the courthouse.
It said general courthouse, which I don't understand what that is either. What is general courthouse?
That is our custodial.
Everybody, yeah, custodial, just everything that has to do with.
But is it the whole budget or is it the wages?
The whole budget.
Okay, that's, that's pretty normal, what it's been. If you look in twenty twenty-one, we spent like seven hundred thousand in twenty twenty-one, we're spending like five eighty.
Yes, yes, I noticed that.
Okay.
And that, that happened on a couple of occasions. No, I'm just pointing out again, if we're looking under every rock and trying to do more with less, and then I see numbers that went up, it went up.
But there's an explanation, there's an offset somewhere, there's an offset somewhere for that increase.
Okay, and I just, at some point, I just, you know, I have to trust, I have to trust.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I'm gonna draw myself crazy.
I'll explain, and I'd be more than happy to explain anything.
We just agree to stay revenue neutral, so there's no money extra.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Okay. That's all.
There's no new money coming in. If anything, there's a shift, so you may shift from one area to another.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay, all right, thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Any other public comments? Mr. Harrington, sir?
Ashley, will you remind me to get on the agenda next time? Thanks, appreciate that. I'm here today to introduce Emily DeBolt. We, we've already been introduced to her, but she's gonna be speaking on a grant we're going after called the Rural Champions Grant, which the Department of Commerce introduced a couple of weeks ago, and Emily's gonna tell you a little bit about it and just update you and then ask for a few things, of course, cause if we came here and didn't ask for something, then we wouldn't be doing our job, so.
I'm not asking for money. Good morning.
Good morning, morning.
So the grant that we are going after is through the Office of Rural Prosperity under the Department of Commerce, and it would allow us to hire a specialist. That specialist can focus on any challenge that the community has identified as a need in the community. And so, based on several things, including the visioning session from the other evening, which I think all of you were there, we can all agree that housing was a top priority that came out of that visioning session. We're also in the middle of a housing study, which I think is gonna be wrapping up very soon. Two more weeks? Okay, and then I think we've got some other things that kind of have, have supported the need for housing. Obviously, we've, we're trying to work out the hospital deal, we're gonna need places for medical staff to live, so we've identified housing as kind of our need. So, this position pay, would pay for a rural champion here in our community. It would pay twenty dollars an hour for that person, and it would provide a dedicated, like mentor and a team of resources around this person to help with whatever the challenge it is that the community has identified. So basically, we'd be hiring a housing champion, is what we've, we're already kind of starting to call it at the Ready Office. The grant does encourage our community to pitch in at least twenty-five percent of matching resources, so Ready has agreed to throw in a little bit more per hour for a salary, and then also Ready would provide laptop, wifi, office space, all of that good stuff. So, we believe that if we can get this grant, it'd be a very good thing for our community in terms of housing and, and working out our housing needs. So, what I come here asking from you guys today is a letter of support. That's one of the things that has been identified in the grant, is identify some community members that can support you in this endeavor. The grant is due September sixteenth. I'd love to have something from you guys by September fourteenth, if possible. Any questions?
Is this a position that goes away when the grant goes away?
It is a one-year position. It would start in October, so it starts immediately, and it would last through the following October. However, if we choose to do something that involves construction, construction would have to start by December of twenty-three, so we would have a year after that for the project to actually begin.
My second question, Rob says he's a specialist, so.
I just, I will touch up based on this, so. One of the key pieces of this grant is that we have a, a, a champion identified already to speed up the process, and so my board has voted to Emily will be our housing specialist or our rural champion for this grant. So what, basically what will happen is she will spend twenty hours a week doing the housing specialist side of this, per the grant, and that's what they pay for, twenty hours per week. And then the other ten a week, she'll continue to do her, twelve, twelve a week, she will continue to do her grant writing that we, we hired her for at Ready. So, no services are gonna be lost, we're gonna continue to provide the same services. However, housing is probably the biggest issue that this county and the communities within this county face, and so we've, we hope we can get this grant so that we can start concentrating on, on the housing side, so. Yeah, so a letter of support would be very appreciated from, from the county for this program.
I got a question. So, is it gonna be, you know, one of these situations where when the grant expires, we're gonna be asked to fund it through the county?
I, I, well, I, I'd hope not. To be completely honest with you, right now, Ready is working towards, working towards achieving private donations from local businesses and individuals throughout the county to help fund our organization instead of relying on public dollars. So, we're hopeful that by the end of next year, we'll have enough funds to, to cover not only the housing specialist, but also Emily's position. So, I would not say that, no, because you guys are, the funding we get from you this year, I believe, is one thirty that was agreed on, it's not more, not less.
Of course, if the grant expires, then it would be our decision to end it.
They're not a, they're not a county.
Yeah, I'm not a county, and you guys give us money, but I'm not a county employee, so it'd be my board's decision to either continue. That's why, that's why we are coming up with the match and not asking the county nor the city to come up with that match, so we're taking money out of our revenue fund, and instead of doing other things with it. Fund, and instead of doing other things with it, uh, we're gonna use it towards paying our, the match for this rural champion, which would be the, the income.
So money won't come from the county if the grant expires, and you wanna continue it, money won't be coming from the county?
I'm, I'm hopeful that we, we won't have to come back and ask the county for more funds, uh, after expires. If, if we can't afford the position, then we continue with the same position we've had. Um, and not to say that, not to say in a year that we just continue with the agreement we have with Emily now, and we keep her on board, and she continues to do twenty for the housing, twelve for the grant, or vice versa, um, because that's within our budget and with our means, but I'm hoping that we can raise enough private funds, uh, locally throughout the communities that we are able to have at some point a housing specialist and a grant writer, uh, in, within my office. But again, I can't speak on what happens in a year, so we only, we don't know what will happen, so.
Okay.
But no, I'm, we're not asking for any funds this year, and so come next year, we'll, I'll be back up here talking about things, I'm sure, between now and then, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there, so. And you can always say no.
Yeah, burn that bridge when we get there? So you would like one of us to write the letter?
Uh, we just need a letter from the county, so, um, maybe give authority to Susan or somebody to write the letter of support, have somebody, I believe Jim or the chairman signs it, just saying you support our efforts in going after a housing specialist for the Rural Champions Grant.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Thank you. I still need with support, a letter of support.
For the housing specialist, I support, support. We, we do, every place we go, every place I go, housing is an issue.
Oh, it's across the country. I don't know that there's any good answers for it. There's not enough builders, there's not enough product, there's not enough supply, there's not enough anything.
Not enough money sometimes, so.
Um, I, I support a letter, I support their, whatever. I support the support letter.
And I support Susan writing it.
Do we need to make any motion for that, or?
I don't think we need a motion.
Okay, yeah, I support.
Susan hurt us, so.
I support it as well.
Okay. Any other public comment? Commission comment time.
Quick, anybody?
I don't have anything.
Okay. So, Nelson?
Yes.
You good? Did you wanna talk?
Well, I'll just make a quick comment, I guess, since you're, apparently it'll take longer. I just, uh, if anyone was interested, I found out today that Lane County went revenue neutral, and all the departments, from what I understand, came to an agreement, everybody gave some, it wasn't like one department got hit super heavy, all department gave as much as they could to make it work, so, that's it.
Good, good. Um, hopefully we'll have that here. Um, so, I'm gonna have to look up the name of this right quick. Uh, the state had, um, since nineteen ninety-seven, on the ad valorem tax, try to find the correct wording, do you remember what it was, Justin?
No, I don't.
Uh, so it's the Local Ad Valorem Property Tax Reduction Fund.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's passed in nineteen ninety-seven, it's, um, required by statute to transfer three point six-three percent of state sales tax revenue to counties and municipalities. In exchange, those local entities must reduce mil levies. Did everybody get that right? The state, in nineteen ninety-seven, passed a statute to put three point six-three percent of the state sales tax revenue back to the counties. Two thousand and four, they decided not to fund that.
It hasn't been ever since.
And hasn't been ever since.
Thank you, Mr. Brownback.
Well, I mean, it's not just him. I mean, that we, you know, the, the, you know, I mean, this is, that's our legislators, our legislators, it's not just our governor, this is our legislators, the ones that also put R and R into effect, the same ones that are running this November, the same ones that are sitting in that seat right now. And they have your best interest at heart. And I've been hand slapped and everything else for speaking out against the state, but I'm tired of them giving us rules when they don't follow their own rules.
They don't fund them.
And they don't fund them or, nor follow them. Let's go to the, let's go to the lottery. Wasn't the lottery passed to fund the schools?
Yep.
Was that not, was that not, it, I'm.
He took it away.
He ma, he took a lot of stuff away, but it's still in effect. Nobody's put them back, and we still have Republican majority control of the House and Senate. What are they doing? They do not have your best interest at heart. None of them. And I don't care who they are, and I don't care, they can say whatever they want about me, but I have spoken out against them since day one I got here. They are not your friends. They're doing nothing for these counties. This is a joke. People need to stand up. People always wanna come and blame us, the county commissioners, for everything. It's not just us. The state, right here, hasn't funded something since two thousand and four, that, the lottery, everything, let's change, let's move money to a different spot, let's do this, let's do that. You know, at least we got money moving back into highways at, at the moment, by our governor. It's one good thing that they've done. I mean, we do, we do see highways being, being built, uh, finally, with money being funded where it was supposed to be funded, but very little, very little. Pathetic, absolutely pathetic. And that's our state, not your county. People need to stand up, people need to go vote in November, and look at the real issues. Are they really doing what they're saying they're doing? I'm done.
Susan, how much right there with that potentially, it's not chump change, is it?
That's not chump change at all. I'd have to look and see what's generated.
So if it was.
It would help.
It'd help a lot, I mean, if it was twenty million yearly to the whole county, that's two percent. For us, that'd be six mils.
Yeah.
Anything else, gentlemen? I don't have anything. I agree with what said, you know, we really need to look at our state representatives and study them before you vote in November, so.
Well, if they're not willing to follow the statute, why do I have to follow the state statutes they give us?
Cause they have jails and you don't.
Sure we have jails, hundred points.
But it's okay for them to do whatever they want. It's not right.
Anything else? You want me to work?
I've already been to work.